Just after six o'clock. So I'll go ahead and call the Town of Adams Board of Selectment meeting to order on Wednesday, June 24th. As I have with all of our meetings, I just wanted to mention that this meeting is being conducted virtually. In the room, we have members of the Select Board, Joe Novak, Rick Blanchard, Vice Chairman Jim Bush, myself, Chair Christine Hoyt, and we have invited members of the public to join us virtually this evening. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectment is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Despite our best efforts, if we're not able to provide for real-time access, a recording of this meeting will be posted or available at your request. So I did want to just once again remind people that this meeting is in fact being recorded by Zoom. And with all of that, I think we can go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, to our Constitution, one nation, under God, in due diligence, with liberty and justice for all.
On the call this evening, we have Lou Mosher from ACS, Corey Bishop from Laffey League, Donna Colton from ACS, Jake Schutz from the Parks Commission, and Angela Costa who just joined us. And Angela, if you could just check and make sure that you can hear us okay? I'm hoping. If not, if you want to send me a chat message. If anyone else should enter the room, I will let members of the board know that. All right. We'll jump right into business. So the first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Before us, we have the minutes for the June 3rd, 2020 meeting. It's my understanding that all members of the board are able to vote on these minutes.
I'm sure I make a motion, we weigh the reading in the minutes of June 3rd, 2020, and accept them as written.
I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second by Rick. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that is unanimous, thank you. That brings us to public comment, and we have a number of you on the call this evening. Would any of you like to speak to the board about a matter that is not on our agenda this evening? If not, if you would like to please unmute yourself. Some are shaking their heads no. I'll give it one more minute, just to make sure. All right. I think the rest of you are on the call for listed under new business, so we'll go ahead and get started. First off, I did want to notify the board and subsequently the public that we did receive a resignation from Parks Commissioner member Jake Leveque, that he resigned his position from the Parks Commission effective last Friday. So that leaves two vacancies on the Parks Commission. What we have done with elected positions that have been vacant, the process has been that we've posted the position as an open position, asked for letters of interest to be submitted to the town administrator's office, and then from there, those have been submitted to the Board of Selectmen to make an appointment. The appointment would be until the next town election, so it would be a one-year term for both of those. It doesn't fill out the term that the person was in. You would then have to run for reelection at the next town election, and then it would fill out whatever the balance is of that position. So we will be posting the open notice for two seats on the Parks Commission. Currently, there are three members, and all three have to be in attendance for them to meet quorum, which makes things a little bit difficult. So please, spread the word that we are looking for two members for the Parks Commission. And we will post that on the website and on the county Facebook page. I also wanted to thank Jake Leveque for his service on the Parks Commission. With that, I should also inform folks that he's also resigned his position on the zoning board. We do have vacancies on that, but I have to talk more about that under Announcing some Good Order. Anything on the board, or any comments or questions?
Actually, we have a letter of interest for him, residentally, so to speak, if he could be good in the Parks Commission, would be really helpful.
Okay. Yep, I think that's what we did with Board of Health in the McCann seat, we stated their interest and their background. Maybe we can do that again. I think Marilyn is working on that, so I'll just see if she can add that. That's a good thought. Thanks. Anything else? Okay. So we'll move on to the second item under new business. Last week, Code Enforcement Officer Mark Playdale presented some information to the Board of Selectmen referencing a March 29th order by the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen, which essentially closed all of our parks. And in order to move forward, Mark had asked that the board officially rescind the March 29th Parks and Fields closure order, and then can walk us again through the process that's in place for reopening the parks and what the public health order would be that Mark would then put into effect. The first word of business would be to rescind, first one.
Oh, make a motion, the board voted to rescind the March 29th, 2020 Parks and Fields closure order, effective eight o'clock tomorrow morning, so June 25th at 8:00 AM.
Okay. I have a motion by Rick.
Second.
I have a second by Jim. Any questions or discussion on that? Could be a code enforcement officer in the room, he's going to walk us through the next part. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. That order of business has been done. So Mark, if you want to walk us through the reopening of the Parks and Fields approval process, and then what the public health order would be going forward, that would be helpful.
So my order will go into effect tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM.
Okay.
What any proposed user will do is submit-
I'm going to ask you to speak up a little bit. Okay, sorry.
Any proposed user will submit a facility request use form to get, they'll also improve with that form, a health and safety plan. That will, you know, pretty much mirror, you know, the June 9th safety standards. And then specifically to ask for the trail where we remain open, Rennfrew Field will be closed, children's playgrounds, however, could be used by supervised children, Quall Street Park could be used for leisure activities, Reed Field would be, you would have approved use, however, the playground equipment will be, could be used by supervised children. Rentfrew Field could be used with approved facility use request. The playground equipment could be used by supervised children, and the basketball courts and skate, skateboard, bike park would then close. Russell Field will remain closed to rehabilitation, which includes the children's playground equipment. Sierra Park could be used for leisure activities. Valley Street could be used with approved request. And then emphasizing no team play, no scrimmaging, no organized games or tournaments. And the only activities that will be permitted are even non-contact rules and training exercises.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, we have a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Rentfrew Field, you said it's being reopened. Rentfrew Field is going to be reopened for baseball use only, isn't it? That was my understanding that that-
It is. So any request would have to be approved. So something that I wanted to have a field hockey game, no, that couldn't, mightn't be a decision.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, that's all.
Go ahead, Rick.
And just for my own, leisure activities is the same as passive recreation, walking, running.
Yep.
Yep, I'm glad that you or whoever made the decision not to open up the skate park and the basketball court there. I think it's only going to be as successful as the adults that are going to be taking care of the kids. I worry about young kids being carriers. Perhaps they'll go home and, you know, be non-sym, yeah, non-symptoms of the COVID, and will, could pass it on to their parents or to their grandparents. So I'm glad that the activity that is going to be taking place is run by adults, so that all the rules will be followed.
Other questions and comments? Since we do have a number of people on the call who are affiliated with some different youth groups, is it okay with the board if I open it up for any questions or comments from the public? And Mark, you're okay? Okay. So if anybody had some questions for Mark, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and ask your question. I just ask that you state your name, because Mark can't see who's talking.
Hi, Mark, this is, hi, Mark, this is Jake Schutz. I just, I agree with the decision to do a staged reopening. I just had a question regarding the playground specifically. Are we taking any precautionary measures as far as cleaning goes with the playgrounds, or is that just going to be typical maintenance?
There's a one-time cleaning by DPW, and then thereafter, it will be used at your own risk.
Okay.
Hi, this is Quinn Gladue. I actually have a question related to the use of the field at Rentfrew. Is there any specific guidance from the town regarding what they're looking for? So we've gone through approval with the City of North Adams and have a safety plan that I shared with Marilyn, but I'm wondering if there is a specific guidance document that would let us know if we're hitting all the points.
Yes, that is the June 9th document from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Mark, where can they find that, or will that be distributed to the-
It'll be distributed with those requesting the facility use request form.
Okay. Is it also-
And it is also on state website.
State website, okay. And we could link to it probably from the town's website? Okay. Quinn, does that help?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with what's in that document. We had to comply with that for the City of North Adams, and we're actually already approved for field usage in North Adams. But just wanted to see, sometimes the towns provide additional guidance, or the cities provide additional guidance, more restrictive guidelines than what the state has. So I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything additional that we need to be mindful of.
And Mark, you're saying there's nothing additional?
There's nothing beyond that document that you're requesting. Actually, what I'll do with my order is I will attach that, so it'll be on our town's website, attached to the order.
To the order, okay. Great.
Thank you.
Marilyn can send to Mark whatever she's received so far. Mark can review it and ensure that it complies with the intent of Mark's order, which it likely will, based on my conversations with the city of North Adams. And if it does, it should be sent.
Okay, so my second part of my question is with, hopefully, right, fingers crossed, the, you know, an impending Phase 3 at some point this summer, right, which would allow, assuming that it stays consistent, and would allow the resumption of like contests, of games, scrimmages, those sorts of things. How, will there be a second application required for facilities use permit, then to convert that to being able to use the field for play? Would it be amended? Like, what would that process look like to get that changed?
So I can't speak to the progression of the stages. However, you make a valid point, so that would simply maybe just be an expansion, a written expansion of the authorization.
So there's two competing issues that the town has. One, usage of the facility, who's using it and when, consistent with normal regulations, nothing different about that, followed by Mark's concerns, which are the health and safety obligations imposed by the state. So I'm assuming, Quinn, when we get to a Phase 3, those obligations of health and safety would be lightened up, modified, or eviscerated to some degree. All we would have to know on the town side is that if you haven't submitted a facility use request yet for whatever facility you want to use, you just have to do that. And if you've already got it on file, then you're good to go.
Okay, so we'll just, okay, I'm comfortable with that.
We just need to know at that point when you're using the field.
So not to belabor the point, the reason I'm asking this is, so when we submitted our safety plan to the City of North Adams, we do not allow spectators at our practices right now. So parents can sit in the parking lot at Graylock School and watch kids over at the park from a distance, but, and they can sit in their cars and they can appropriately socially distance, but we don't allow spectators at our practice. So if I submit that same safety plan, which I did, to the Town of Adams, at the point that we're going to do contests, we probably would, I mean, obviously, we'd follow the guidance, but we might restrict the amount of spectators per player, right? We might say each player can only have two spectators, to limit the number of people at a contest, for example. So I would just submit an addendum to that safety plan at that point, once we have that guidance.
That would be fine.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for Mark? Okay. Do we need to approve anything? No, because it's just more informational. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the information. All right. So more information will be on the website. And I think Marilyn has been in touch with all of you, at least according to the memo that I have in front of me, that she contacted all of you. Is that correct? Okay, excellent.
Thank you for your time. Safe, everyone.
You're welcome. You're more than welcome to stay on.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that you were all set with the information that you needed, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Quinn? So that brings us to department reports. Jay?
Thank you. Speaking of fields, July 20th, we anticipate work to begin at Russell Field for a rehabilitation program, therefore Russell Field remains closed. I was provided notice this afternoon from Mass DOT that the northern portion of the rail trail work will begin Monday, June 26th. A notice, public notice should be going out from Mass DOT. We'll put out a blast on our Facebook page and ask the town clerk to post it on our webpage, but the trail will then be closed starting Monday. DPW has scheduled line painting for sometime in the month of July, and in terms of construction projects, we anticipate the Route 8 Commercial Street bid opening to be July 14th. So that project is moving ahead. We have a bulky waste day this Saturday, but I'll let Sloughman-Bush give a little bit more information from that. That is all I have for this evening.
Any questions for the town administrators? Okay. The town council is not able to join us this evening, so we don't have a report from the council. So that brings us to Subcommittee and Liaison Report. Joe?
I just passed on some information in your mailboxes regarding the Agricultural Commission and what it is, what it can be used for. And I also put in a editorial by Sarah Gardner, who's a professor at Williams College in Environmental Studies, and it shows really a bleak picture of the dairy farming industry here in Massachusetts. We're down to, I believe, somewhere 117 dairy farms in the county. The pricing has always been inconsistent for the price of milk, which is, goes at 100-pound rate. That has stayed stable, and it also, at this point, it's gone below, which kicked in something that the Patrick administration put in to protect somewhat the farmers, dairy farmers with the milk pricing. So in short, I think that it's important that, you know, we help our farmers, because they're just such a big part of what makes Massachusetts, particularly rural Massachusetts, something that people can be proud of. So perhaps in the future, we could maybe draft a letter and send it to Commissioner LeBlanc, and asking, you know, his support to help farmers, so that's maybe something we can do in the future. But I just was asked to submit something, so there you are.
Thank you very much. So I'm hoping that maybe we could put this on a future agenda to talk about the composition of the Agricultural Commission, and how we might be able to either narrow down the number so that we can get to a quorum, or how we can recruit people. So maybe even as early as July 8th, we can have a conversation, but this is really helpful to have in preparation for that, so thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Let's see, we had a meeting with Mike Nellis on the Charm program this past week. We hooked up with some people from the school, because they're going to be the ones starting the Green Team in North Adams, with the high school and junior high school and grammar schools. We're moving forward with that. It seems like it's going to be very doable, that that'll give us the Charm with North Adams Transfer Station. So we should, Mike Nellis is going to be at our next Northern Berkshire-Salloway's District Meeting, July 17th, I believe it is. And we're going to discuss it, and if we're going to vote on it, whether we want to go ahead with the Charm, which I don't anticipate any problems whatsoever. I had Council on Aging meeting this week, just discussing what's going on. I mean, they're going to be renting a tent so they can have meetings. There are no meetings indoors there at all, so.
Well, we haven't, I told Erica that's not approved yet, and told Jerry to take a look at it, particularly for a safety standpoint, because the tent will be up and attended on weekends.
Okay.
It'll be a town tent, so her plan is good. We just need to look at the tent.
And with the Serenac also stated that the Northern Berkshire-Salloway's District would be willing to pitch in for the tent also. So that's, go ahead. And I really want to thank all the volunteers for the food truck. I mean, it's tremendous. Yesterday, it was hot. We had well over 200 vehicles again, and it went off, it just went off so smoothly. It was great. It's great. Good bunch of volunteers, and I'm happy to be part of it. The bulky waste collection is going to be Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00. Everybody's going to be asked to unload their own vehicles. We're not going to handle anything unless, obviously, you're unable to do it, we'll absolutely help you. But because of COVID-19 liabilities, we just can't go unload vehicles like we have in the past. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, can I ask Jim a question?
Certainly.
What is Charm? What is, I, you've mentioned it in context before, is that an acronym for-
Yes, I can't remember where it is, Joy. I asked where it is the other day, that's wrong.
Okay.
But it's a collaboration between the two communities. And what we're going to do is, Linda's going to give North Adams education on becoming a Green Team in their schools. In turn, they're going to let us use their facility, set the transfer standard.
Okay.
I wish I didn't remember exactly what it is.
That's okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jim? Okay. So just the head thing, Jake Leveque, part of his resignation letter on Friday, also resigned his seat on the zoning board of appeals, because that leaves us with two alternates to find people for. And we still have David Ryan-Miller in a temporary position on the zoning board. We had appointed him temporarily to fill that seat, I think just for last fall. He has stayed on and is continuing to serve. So they do have five people who are serving, but one is safe, who would probably like to step away from that and just focus on planning board. So it would be nice to find three people in the public to serve on the zoning board of appeals. So we'll put that notice out as well. We'll be looking for Parks Commissioner and zoning board. It's my understanding that Pam Geary is working with Donna Seazin to work on that portion. So I wanted to alert people to that. And then that brings us to Announcing some Good Order. I'll start back down to the end of the show. Joe, if you have anything?
Yes, I do. I'd like to announce that if you don't already know, that Riley Robinson was named Female Athlete of the Year in high school. And I was wondering if you thought it'd be appropriate to maybe invite her to our next meeting and give her a citation for that accomplishment?
We could maybe do that for July 15th. I hope we not have a meeting next week. And then July 15th would be the next televised meeting, and let me see what's on the agenda to see.
Because that's quite an accomplishment.
It absolutely is. Yep.
And I, I'll save other things for next meeting.
Okay.
So that's all that I really have. Well, there's something I'd like to ask Jay, if I could. Jay, I know there was a retirement board meeting. Are there minutes to that?
I assume so.
Because after hearing how much money, we lost 8 million in our retirement, I wanted to see, I'd like to see what the talk was around that, if there was any at all, so.
Yeah, there should be minutes. Mary is probably your best contact.
I couldn't attend it because of the executive session, and I also had a Council on Aging meeting outside there. I tried to put myself, it didn't work well. But Mary should have all the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, she's chair now, Joe.
Yeah, because I saw, I saw them when they were meeting. I happened to come in the building. And who is on that board?
We have Mary.
We have Wall.
Yes. George, the dad. I can't, there's the woman from, she is the retirement, the City of North Adams Retirement Board Administrator. I can't think of her name. And then Cheryl is not on the board, but she's the admin for the retirement board.
Okay.
I think we got everybody. Did we get everybody?
Rick, anything for Announcing some Good Order?
Okay.
Jim?
No, please.
Okay. I just have one item, because I think many of the board members know, I've been working with the Northern Berkshire-Nyway, Berkshire-United Way- I've been working with the Northern Berkshire, Northern Berkshire United Way, Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, and the Housick Valley School District to provide meals every Saturday morning for families in the district. This Saturday marks the last Saturday that the meal distribution will take place. The grant runs out as of Saturday. So it'll be 10:30 a.m. over at Housick Valley Elementary School for one hour, where until then, 125 meals are given out. I wanted to thank Bally Fair, who's been providing those meals. I think he said he's doing beef nachos for the last meal. So I know, I was kind of excited.
Gringles.
So, you know, let people know. I know that the superintendent's done a nice job letting everybody in the district know about those meals.
He was running gringles. He did a whole jive with the nachos.
Well, I'm just grateful that Berkshire Regional Planning Commission reached out to the town of Adams about the grant opportunity and that we were able to provide it for, I think, nine weeks, 10 weeks. So it's been great. Okay. With that, that's it for announcements and good of the order. We are going into an executive session. There is an agenda item on the agenda following the executive session. So we would be entering and then coming out of that.
To adjourn.
Nope, there are visions.
All that's right.
Correct.
I would like to motion the board into executive session for purpose number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, being Interim Police Chief Troy Hayday. And we will come out to, for contract approval. I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? This is a roll call in both, Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. So we will enter into executive session. I just asked for about a five-minute recess so that I can close windows and clear the room. And thank you for those who participated by phone tonight. Have a good night.